Hey everyone, welcome to Community Breathwork. Today is Monday, July 14th, 4 o'clock. And we're here for another conscious breathwork session as always, shuffling the mythology deck to find a card to guide the session. And this is the Classical Mythology Deck by my teacher Jacques Theron. So if you're watching this on YouTube and you're like, wow, this deck's really cool, you can buy one for yourself, so go check it out. And let's see what we've got. The card for the day is Cronos and Ananka. This is the protagonoy of time and necessity. So it says, "Time tempers the material creation, necessity forces life into action." And so it says in the card, "At the beginning of time, the entwined tales of Cronos and Ananka broke open the cosmic egg, forming the ordered worlds of earth, sea, and sky. After splitting the cosmic egg, they encircled the universe, driving the motion of the creation, causing time to flow and the heavens to rotate. Uh, Ananka is the goddess of necessity, force, and destiny, inevitability. She is a power that even the gods must obey and honor. Ananka is considered the ultimate determining force of fate. Some consider her to be the mother of the moray, the fates, since she is able to influence their dictates. Cronos is the god of eternal time, a force beyond the power of the gods. He remained remote and ethereal, often personified as Father Time. He is distinct from Titan Cronos, which is Saturn. And in both protagonoy were described as snake-like. Cronos was said to possess the heads of a bull, lion, and man. Uh, this composite creature encompasses the four fixed signs of astrology, Taurus, Leo, Scorpio, as the snake, and Aquarius." And so the nuance for this card is limiting, lacking, needing. It's the primordial element of limitation. There's more, um, divination for this card, but I will read that out as we get into the breathwork session. Uh, the affirmation for this card is, "Lack of time and times of lack reveal my true lessons." Again, "Lack of time and times of lack reveal my true lessons." So again, just to share before we go into my own life, I have a big bandage on my arm. So this card is definitely, I definitely understand this card. Um, on Saturday, I just had a little accident. Uh, there was some, a bowl broke in my home and it was thrown in the trash. And I went to push the trash down and I ended up slicing open my wrist. And there was blood going everywhere. And so right in that moment, there was a lack of time, right? We're like, okay, we need to go to the ER. And so everyone kind of just shifted into emergency mode. Uh, my friend kind of made a little tourniquet and put pressure on this arm. And you know, we did what we had to do, uh, to, to, to get it sewed up, right? I got seven stitches and now it's healing. Um, but just even in times, I think in life, even when we don't, when it's not an emergency situation, right? There's, there's never enough time, it, it, it seems, right? And yet because we only have a limited amount of time on this planet, that's what makes our lives valuable, right? That's what creates necessity, right? Like if I, if I didn't love doing breathwork, I wouldn't be coming on here every week and doing it and sharing this gift with everyone. And just I'm sure in your own life, each, each one of you, you have either projects or creative projects or, you know, deadlines, things that need to get done, whether they're for work or your personal life and spiritual fulfillment. So Cronos and Ananka are just a reminder of that. Again, "Lack of time and times of lack reveal my true lessons." So if everyone is lying down, and again, if you're watching this later on YouTube, now would be a time to find a quiet spot to lie down. If you want a pillow or a blanket, definitely maybe get some water nearby in a journal. Um, and we're going to begin the breathwork process. We'll start today with our medium conscious connected breaths. Okay, so again, we can start breathing in and out. Breathing in and out, either through the mouth or through the nostrils. Just pick one, whichever feels more clear. Remember with rebirthing, with conscious connected breathing, it's about the consistency. It's not so much about the intensity. We want these breaths to be gentle, full, and just flowing from the inhale to the exhale and vice versa, just like this. With every breath, allowing your body to relax and your mind too. But again, remember in the first 20 minutes of a rebirthing session, the mind will fight or can fight, especially if you're newer to breathwork, especially if you've had a hard day, if you're coming from work and it's been stressful or just if you're in a stressful situation right now in your life, it can be hard to relax, it can be hard to ease the mind. So if that's the case, don't fight your mind, don't blame yourself, don't judge yourself. Just observe the mind, just observe what's coming up as, as if you're, it's not your mind, as if it's just words or scenarios appearing. Most importantly, always coming back to the breath as you continue to breathe in and out. Uh, feeling free to yawn, feeling free to sigh on the exhale if it feels right. When we make a sound on the exhale, when we sigh, it can help relax our vagus nerve, which relaxes our whole nervous system. So again, there's no right or wrong way to breathe. I facilitated a breathwork session on Saturday and there was one participant who at the end was like, oh, I didn't know if I should be breathing into my chest or my belly. And so they kind of got caught in that anxiety and I think it kind of blocked them from going deeper into their experience. So again, let this just be another reminder that there's no right or wrong way to breathe. As long as you're breathing in and out, a medium breath, whatever that medium feels right for you, as long as you're not holding your breath, you know, there's, there's really no wrong way to do it. Breathe in whatever way feels intuitive and right for you. Uh, yawning it out. And again, if you yawn during this process, that's totally okay. Just your body coming online is also another form of release. So yawn away if it comes up and then come back to your medium breaths. Returning to the divination for Cronos and Ananka, the protagonoy of time and necessity. First line of divination on the back of this card says, "In times of need and lack, allow the state of necessity to develop new solutions." So again, sometimes we feel fear if, you know, maybe we're running out of money or if maybe we're at the end of our lease for our apartment. Um, whatever it might be, or if we're at a job and we're like, oh man, this deadline is looming. And we start to feel that pressure. And so this card is saying, right? In those times, we might shut down, we might freeze or panic. Oh gosh, where am I going to get the money? Where am I going to get the money? And we start panicking. But this card says that perhaps the state of necessity is, is the pressure that we need to develop new solutions in our life, right? If we were comfortable, if we were comfy, then there would be no need to look for another source of income or a, a, a new way to create, um, whatever it might be. So again, this card is saying, use that, these times of need and lack, these are lessons. This necessity is forcing us into action. Next line of divination says, "You are wasting energy resisting forces beyond your control. Surrender. Try to enjoy and appreciate the lessons coming from your obligations. Find purpose in your burdens." And that card is, this card is really speaking for me today. Maybe it's speaking for all of you as well. Um, but I just think it's funny because earlier today on Instagram, I made a reel and I was just reflecting on, um, this wound on my arm and just because it was very scary, it was very real. Um, but it's made me really appreciate my life a lot more. Just how much I love my girlfriend Cora. And even just yesterday, like we just went shopping at Walmart and hung out on our friend Matt's porch. And it was so simple, but it was just, it was so beautiful. And I just really enjoyed just being a human, like being able to be a person who gets to go to a store in a relatively peaceful time and, and, and buy the things that, that, that we need. And then to also go over to our friend's house and to just enjoy a beer on his front porch and hang out with his parents as well. It was just, it was so simple, but it was really nice. Um, but then I remember after I made this reel, I was like, why is the algorithm not showing it to everyone, right? And so that's definitely me wasting energy resisting forces beyond my control. And so again, for me, maybe it's, it's the algorithm. For you, maybe it's something else in your life, you know, that's just, there's nothing you can do about it. And when there's nothing that we can do about something, you know, we, we can't just keep, keep complaining about it and getting upset and winding ourselves up. We just have to surrender and just accept that this is the way it is. I didn't make Instagram. If I made social media, it'd be very different. But I'm not Mark Zuckerberg, I'm Michael Boothby. And all I can do is teach breathwork and make videos and write and inspire others to, to go on their own healing journey, to look at themselves with an honest eye, with compassion, and do the hard work that it, that it takes to heal and to evolve. So continuing to breathe in and out as I speak these words. Observe the limitations and boundaries in your life. Be conscious of how you use your time and resources. Again, right? We all only have this one life. And sure, if you, if you believe in reincarnation, maybe you'll be back, but you'll be back as somebody different with new personality, new challenges. Maybe you'll be somewhere different in the world. And if you don't believe in reincarnation, then, then this is it. So we have to use our time well and our resources, right? Even if we only have a limited amount of resources, we have to use them, right? So even this breathwork group is, is a resource that I provide for my friends and family and anybody who is looking for healing, looking to relax, looking to explore breathwork on a deeper level. Um, so again, just first of all, just thanking you all for showing up today, not just for me, but, but for yourself. And I, and I hope that you use this time well, that you go deep into your own process and breathe and, and get what you were looking for out of it. So continuing to breathe in and out. Next line of divination for this card says, "Set clear boundaries with self or others. Be conscious of what is important for your growth and consciously prune away obstacles to your purpose." That's right, boundaries are really important. Boundaries are a lesson that I had to learn later in my life. My parents did not really have good boundaries and they didn't teach me how to have good boundaries. It was honestly all the great therapists and guides who I worked with in my late twenties, when my mental health started to fail, who, who taught me the importance of boundaries. Um, I ended up in a lot of codependent relationships myself because of my childhood. And so I've learned that just clear boundaries is, is actually, that's what love really is, right? When we know when and how to engage with each other and being able to say no to people. No, I don't have the capacity for that right now. No, I don't have the time, but hey, maybe tomorrow I would love to chat about that, right? But again, being aware of what is important for you, right? Like if, if you want to be a musician, then you have to dedicate your time to practice and eventually go to open mics and play in front of people and find other musicians and maybe collaborate with them or jam with them. You know, if you want to be a writer, you have to write and you also have to read. So it's like, who inspires you? Using your time to read, um, books or short stories, I mean, whether it's fiction or nonfiction, you know, whatever it might be, but spending your time well. And again, if you're noticing, oh, I'm actually spending three hours on Instagram every day. You know, that's, that's going to make it hard for you to become a professional artist, writer, musician, performer, creator, whatever it might be. So, you know, perhaps you download an app on your phone, um, that, that limits your time on social media. Or maybe, you know, maybe you put your phone, hey, it's time to create. I'm going to put my phone in a, in a drawer, uh, because I know then the notifications won't get to you. Whatever it might be, whatever, right? And just like with this breathwork process, as we're breathing in and out, just like in this process, we are, when we breathe in, we are filling our body with air, with prana, with life force energy. And when we breathe out, breathing out CO2, which is just like the byproduct of breathing. We don't, we can't breathe in CO2. It's kind of like a waste gas for our body. Okay, I'm sorry, waste gas, which is a weird word. I don't know why I said that, forgive me. But again, just as we exhale, we're consciously releasing what no longer serves us, right? We're clearing space. I like to think of conscious breathwork, it's like tending our inner garden. Right? We are planting those seeds for our future, that life that we want, that transformation. And with every inhale, we're breathing that in. And then with every exhale, we are weeding the garden. We're pulling out the weeds, we're releasing stuck emotions. We're just releasing old air, just on a physical level. So, but again, this card is saying to do that in our lives as well. Coming back to the breath, breathing in and out. Finally, the last line of divination for this card. It says, "Economize and save. Do not be wasteful or extravagant at this time. If possible, save for a rainy day." And again, that's really funny for me to hear because I was, I was, I drove over to my twin sisters today to do laundry and I was like, oh, maybe I'll stop and get some lunch on the way home. And then in my mind, I was like, no, we got this trip to Alaska coming up in August. You know, we have food at home. I had to be like my own mom, be like, no, we have food at home. Don't need a treat today. So, and again, that's the thing, sometimes in our lives, like, right? We have to be our own mother, we have to be our own father, right? Because if we're just like that spoiled kid who's like that Veruca Salt, whose parents give her everything they want. If we do that as an adult, then perhaps we don't have a lot of money or times are hard. Uh, it's just going to make our situation even harder. And we want to be our own best friend. We want to be that kind, loving mother to ourselves and maybe that stern but loving father as well, right? That, um, in plant medicine, right? Ayahuasca is very much like a, a, a mother energy. It's, it's a feminine energy. And so her lessons can be kind of winding, um, kind of tricky to understand, but, but, but she'll always get there. Whereas tobacco is more of that masculine energy. And so I've been reading a, a book on teacher plants. And so that's what, um, the book was written by an anthropologist who went down to South America. And so that's what the, the guy from the tribe was saying is that, you know, we come to ayahuasca to learn, but we come to tobacco in order to get things done. Um, so I just think that's an interesting perspective that also lines up, I think culturally with the roles of the mother and the father, right? The mother is there to just teach the lessons, but also to provide. Um, and then the father is there to, you know, I just, I just think of my own father being like my soccer coach. And I don't think I would have played soccer if my dad didn't have that passion for soccer and wanted to also teach as well. So again, just becoming aware of just those energies within yourself, the feminine and the masculine, right? That energy that is very nurturing, very loving, but then also that energy, um, that is more masculine, that is more stern, that is more, let's, let's get things done. Because we need both of these energies in our lives, right? And, and if they're in balance, right? If we're just working all the time and just doing, then, then we become a workaholic and maybe we neglect our personal life, maybe we neglect our emotional life or spiritual life. Um, and so things kind of go out of balance. I mean, again, in my twenties, I think I was very head in the clouds. I was very much in, uh, the feminine, very much in the world of dreams and ideas. And I, I ended up short on rent a few months when I was living in Chicago. Luckily, my, my twin sister and parents helped me out. But looking back, you know, I, I could have used more of that masculine energy. Um, but right, and so again, so if that feminine is, is almost out of balance or if we're too much in that, that's what it looks like. It can look like kind of, kind of cloudy, head in the clouds. Very, very, oh, everything will be all right. And maybe we're telling ourselves that, but we're not doing the things that we know we need to do, um, in order to improve our life, which again brings it back to this affirmation, the meaning of this card of Cronos and Ananka, "Lack of time and times of lack reveal my true lessons." So again, coming back to the breath breathing in and out. So let's keep breathing like this for another 30 seconds. And then we're going to go into two minutes of faster breathing. Again, just to accelerate this process, just to allow each of you to go, uh, deeper into your experience. Remember like Cronos and Ananka, it's not going to last forever, but using this time, uh, you know, if, if, if you need something out of the session, using this faster breathing to, to get what you want out of it. So let's begin with those faster breaths. 30 seconds, keep going. And remember, although this breath is faster, we don't want to tense the neck. So just checking in, keeping this breath gentle, but just faster, right? In, out, in, out, in, out. Halfway there, keep going. And again, if it's a little uncomfortable, that's okay. We're just going a little bit beyond the comfort zone in order to stretch, in order to grow. You shouldn't feel so uncomfortable that, that, that you're in pain. So if you're breathing in that way and it hurts, maybe slow down, but, but it shouldn't be hurting. You should just definitely feel a little more enlivened. You should definitely feel a lot more present. You might feel hot, that's okay. Keep breathing, 30 more seconds. 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. And now returning to those medium breaths. And again, maybe now these medium breaths feel a little bit easier. Again, maybe even looking back at this fast breathing is, it's almost like a microcosm or a metaphor for when our lives get hard. And it's like, oh man, we, it's crunch time, right? We really gotta focus, really gotta put in that effort. And that's what those fast breaths are about. It's about really building that energy, again, so that we can push through our blocks, push through our challenges. Again, right? If we didn't have time or necessity, nothing would matter, right? If we all lived forever, what would be the point, right? Their life would be meaningless because we would all just be doing whatever. Their life would be meaningless, because we would all just be doing whatever. Even relationships wouldn't matter as much, right? Because our relationships matter, right? We love so deeply, because one day the people we love will die, right? Time will come, their time will come and so will ours. And so because of that, because of time, that, 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 that creates that necessity. If, if we only have a finite amount of time, then, then, then we want to use that time well. We want to spend time with the people we love, we wanna do what we love, right? And so that's, this card is just a reminder. And again, I, my, this, this accident that happened, um, you know, me going to the ER, it was a big wake-up call. And the whole time, I was so grateful that I had a loving partner who came with me, who supported me and at the ER. And then even later, when I came home and, and, and all the adrenaline faded, right? I was just so grateful, um, to have this partner, to have someone in my life who really cares about me as much as I care about them. And so again, maybe you have a partner in your life, maybe you don't, maybe you're single, and that's okay. You know, i- if you are looking for a partner, you know, my teacher always says, you know, that we have to embody the qualities that we want in a partner. And when we embody that, when we can show up for ourselves in the same way that the most perfect partner of our dreams would, that's when they show up, right? We don't, I don't believe in dating apps anymore, or anything that forces this process. I really believe the deeper we can go into our own love and live a life that is truly authentic to who we are. And again, breath work is a process that can help facilitate that, that inner transformation that leads to that external transformation. If we are to only have a finite amount of time on this planet, we might as well do it, like live this life, live a life that's so true to who we are, that's full of joy, full of intention, full of purpose, right? But in order to find all of that, we have to shed away all the distractions, all of the things that are keeping us, you know, keeping us back or keeping us blocked. And it can be other people, it certainly could be a job, a stressful job. But I think it's often our own limiting beliefs. I mean, that's a fundamental, um, part of rebirthing as a holistic therapy, is that we're, we're doing this, these sessions, the, the talking, just to bring to the surface these blocks, these limiting beliefs, but we're using the breath. We're using this process to become aware, yes, but then to integrate, to feel the feelings that we didn't allow ourselves to feel in those moments that felt really hard. And when we do that, it creates a space of release, it creates a space of surrender. And it's in that surrender that we can become truly present in our lives. And that's where the transformation takes place. That's when we start to really, uh, see our lives start to change. And when other people, when we, when it really, when our lives, when our lives start to transform, we know we're doing it right, because other people will tell us, they'll go, hey, what are you doing? Something's different about you, right? Or wow, you've got that pep in your step, or whatever it might be, right? The universe will start to reflect back to us, um, all the work that we put in to do this inner transformation, right? We transform the inner world, and then the outer world bends to meet us. And so that's why we're breathing today, right? We're meeting here today because our time is finite, because there is a sense of urgency that should exist within all of us, every human being on this planet, to figure out who we are. And so then we can just be who we are, we don't have to pretend anymore. We don't have to wear any masks, or, 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 or let our, let our actions be about pleasing others, no. We can, we can please ourselves, and that doesn't mean to be selfish, right? We should definitely also care about others, right? We have a responsibility to ourselves and to others. But in order to, 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 to live out this authenticity, in order to even be aware of others, that, that involves a certain level of transcendence of what's holding us back, of our limiting beliefs, of our suffering. And so that is why we breathe. So again, coming back to this medium breath, in and out. I think I've, I think I've said my piece on, on this, so I'm gonna use the rest of the time to just breathe. And then at the end of the session, we will review and integrate and chat about our experiences. So now, just breathing, really focusing on the breath, remembering to check in with your body, with your mind, with your emotions, and with spirit. With every breath, surrendering a little bit deeper, just letting the thoughts go, just, just breathing, really just allowing yourself to be as you are in this moment, alive in this human body, breathing air on a group call with four other humans. How wonderful, how beautiful, how magnificent. Again, coming back to gratitude. I know that I am grateful for all of you, for showing up for yourselves, for doing this work, for allowing me to have a small platform to, to teach breath work and to facilitate. It is one of the greatest joys of my life, and I now feel that it is a purpose of mine to promote breath work and to make it accessible, to make it fun, to make it cool, and not so scary. So, again, coming back to gratitude for yourself, for showing up today and breathing. Maybe taking it even a step further, for having gratitude for whatever it is in our life that is causing it to be hard, that might be outside of our control. You know, these forces beyond our control, you know, just surrendering to it. Maybe even loving them, maybe even writing them a thank you letter. Because without that challenge, we wouldn't grow, we wouldn't evolve, we would stay stuck. You know, so whether it's your boss, whether it's your job, maybe it's your partner, whatever it might be, in this moment, having gratitude for that thing in your life that is bringing adversity, dropping the hate, dropping the struggle, even if it's just for the next ten minutes. As you continue to breathe, I am grateful for my adversaries, I'm grateful for my enemies for showing me valuable lesson. Even now, in this moment, I am grateful for that broken porcelain bowl shard that stabbed open my wrist on Saturday. I'm grateful for it, because it made me appreciate life even deeper, appreciate my, not only my girlfriend, but my friends who were there, even if their carelessness is what led to me, that me, you know, getting stabbed by that bowl. I'm still here, I'm still alive, I, I paid a hundred dollar copay, or whatever it might be. So I'm just coming back to gratitude, all, you can always come back to gratitude in your life, no matter what, no matter what's happening to you, no matter, you know, you could be dying. And I had this thought as the blood was coming out of my arm. I said, man, if I died right now, I'm gonna die in gratitude, I'm gonna die full of joy, I'm gonna die laughing, because this is so insane, this is so peculiar that this even happened. What a freak accident, you know? And again, I didn't die. But again, this, just using an extreme example, maybe in your life, you've had something similar happen to you, something that necessitated a transformation, or, you know, whether it was an emergency or a friend passing, or family member, something that just woke you up, that just shook you into the present moment, into awareness. And I think we have to be grateful for these things, instead of, you know, just complaining about them. We waste so much energy in, in our lives complaining to our friends and family about, about what's not going right in our lives. But what if instead we, we expressed gratitude for all of it? How could, how could that simple action transform the way we think, uh, you know, and, and how we believe, and how we show up in the world, how we show up for ourselves and for the people we love? I know in my own life, uh, my mother was a big complainer, and it was so draining. And she would always call her, and she would call my grandmother when she was alive and just complain for hours and hours. And I would be in the car being like, please stop. Because I was a kid and I didn't know how to have boundaries, and I didn't, hey mom, can you get off the phone, this is too much for me? I, I, I didn't have the words or language to say that back then. But again, even being stuck in a car with my mother, who's talking, who's yapping on the phone with her mother, right, shows that time and necessity, that even that, even that moment will end, we'll get to our destination and get out of the car. And, you know, then I'd go and play video games, or whatever it was that, that, that I would be doing at the time. Again, just coming back to your breath, breathing in and out. At the end of the day, we can't fight time. What a useless exercise to fight time, because time is gonna win every time. There's no winning against time. We will all grow older, and our lives will be the results, the result, the accumulation of our decisions, of our behavior, of our actions. And I know that can be a tough pill to swallow, especially if our life perhaps isn't going the way we want it. But becoming aware of how we are getting in the own, in our, in the, in our own way of the things that we want is the first step to awareness and evolving to a higher level of consciousness and balancing your energy so that you can align your life with your, with a higher belief, with a dream, whatever it might be. Remembering, again, if your life is hard, if you're struggling, if you're going through it right now, where is the lesson? What is my purpose? Where is the meaning? And just finding it, doing whatever it takes to find that meaning, to find that purpose, and then spending your time living out that purpose. And so now we can move into some deeper breaths, more like this. Continuing to take those long, deep breaths to ground out the end of this practice. So right now in my life, I'm beyond, uh, doing one-on-one breath work, growing my healing practice, helping others break through their blocks and releasing stuck emotions, helping them rediscover who they are beyond the masks, beyond all the conditioning, and, and doing these free sessions Monday and Friday. I'm also teaching an improv class on Monday nights. And so when I look at this nuance of this Kronos Nanaka card, this nuance of limiting, my mind goes to teaching improv, right? Because, you know, if, if, if people just came on day one and I said, alright, improvise, you know, go do a whole forty-five minute long-form set. It, it would go completely off the rails. And so Viola Spolin is kind of the, the godmother, grandmother of improvisational theater. And she wrote the book Improvisation for the Theater. And much of the games and exercises that we practice, you know, come from her work. And so improvisational theater games are wonderful for teaching improv. Why? Because they put limits on the scene, right? Okay, we're gonna do a game that's just questions. Okay, now we're gonna do a game that's this, and now that. So it's very specific, it's very focused. But when we spend several weeks playing these games that have these limits, now we can move into some, we can take some of the limits off. We can go into some long-form improv. And because we've, we've had these training wheels or these limitations, it actually opens the door for the improviser to, to have more creativity when we take those training wheels away. So just to tie it back to this breath work session, and all of you in your lives, again, like if you're, if your life feels hard right now, challenging, or like you're lacking in some way, whether you feel you might be lacking love, or money, or, or, or a place to live, whatever it might be, just knowing that these challenges, if you can overcome these lessons now, when it's hard, on the other side, you will have that abundance, you will have a place to live, you will find that job, that dream job, or that money will come to you. And so when it does, don't forget the lessons that you learned when you were lacking the thing that you were seeking, right? Because that's gonna help you sustain it and keep going, stay humble. So now you all can relax your breath completely, just breathe in normally, staying wherever you're at in your breath work journey. in your breath work journey. Just breathing, maybe there's a few more messages coming through for you. A final release. Maybe you're just feeling relaxed and just basking in that peace. Wherever you're at, just breathing, just being. And so now, beginning to return, wiggling your fingers and your toes. Be shaking your arms and your legs. Taking a long back stretch, maybe a good morning stretch. Plowing arms above your head, stretching out the back. Breathing life back into your body. And then whenever you're ready, slowly but surely, opening your eyes. Coming back into a seated position. Feeling refreshed, feeling renewed. Much like Cronus and Ananka, even this breath work session must end. So if you're tuning in, if you're watching this after and you're at the end, I hope you have a wonderful day. I hope you take this peace with you. Wherever you are in the world, all the love, all the wisdom. Take care.